Nirmavam, modala madhigaram, 24 avasana vasidham.
Romans chapter 1, verse 21. Rama matrathiyam nirvayakuttavakimma.
Avarkai devanay arendum, avare devanindu mai meppadutamalum, stotthriyamalum irundhu, thangal sundanegali naale veenar aanargal, unarvillada orulde irudheyum iruladendudu.
Indhe orukutam janangalai kuritha dana, vilugaiin varthegalange cholla padukkara.
Here the fallen words of this group of people have been mentioned. Okkumpu janlan kurchina padipoyinam aattalikka chappabadiyinnadi.
Avarkai devanay arendavarkal.
They were people who are known God. Or devanirukinavaru.
Ananal avare magimeppadutavallai, avare stotthrikyavallai.
But they glorified him not as God, neither were thankful. Mahimuparchalaidu devan kisthutula arpinchalaidu.
In the avikuraya valkaila, devanay thudippadu enbadu mikamukkiyamana oru pakdi.
The spiritual life is an important aspect of praising God. Aathpee jeevutam devanisthutinchitanaadi mikilukkiyamana bagavoo.
Namme evalu stotthrikrav, evalu aandavare mai meppadutukram, enbadu kanakil vakkapadukkara on.
How much you are praising God, how much you are glorifying God, everything will be kept in account. Entega sthutinchuchinam, entega devan mai mepparchinamani lekkal unchapaduchinadi.
Namme evalavaai devanay mai meppadutukramo, avalavaaga namakke periyakariyengalai devan cheykarar.
To the extent we glorify God, to that extent he does great things to us. Entega devan mai mepparchinam, antega devudukappakariyaman cheyichunam.
Devan namie neer padithinar?
Why God has made us? Devudindukkaman neer parchinu?
Yes, I, 43, 21.
Isha chapter 43, verse 21. Esya 45tham nirvayakuttavakimma.
Indha janathay enakkandhi neer paduthenain, ivarkai en thudiyay solivervargal.
Aandavare thudiyay chulliyavur mudiaga, namellaray neer padutha padavarkal.
We all have been formed to show forth the praise of the Lord. Devan ekasthutinipracharam chaitukkaman neer parchibonnavaaramo.
Devanay stotthrippadu enbadu namudiyekadamai.
Praising God is a duty. Devanisthutinchitaman ikkarkthaviyam gavunadi.
Namadhi appudishayidukkaram enbadu diriyade.
We do not know how we have done it. Manameela kuchesiyunamotheliyadu.
Ananal yappudus stotthram sayivandhu, namelvundha oru uuliyam.
But it's a duty that is a ministry that has fallen upon us that we have to praise God always. Yellapudus stotthram chaita maneyakkakarkthaviyam gano mankavudum.
On the day of the year, 5, 18.
When we see first Thessalonians chapter 5, verse 18. Madhur Thessaloniki 5tham bajchimdevakimma.
Yellahatleem stotthram sayingal, appadisayvadhe krsthi esukal ungalai kuruthu devanade suttamaayidukkada.
Yappudus stotthram sayvadhe devanode sittam.
Praising God, giving thanks to God always is the will of God. Yellapudus stotthram chaita devan chittamayunadi.
Ivagallarunna namvilangikuluvadi enna?
From these what do we understand? Veetlundi aimikrainchuchinam.
Oru devanade pillai yappudus stotthram manikondae irukkaro.
A child of God should always give thanks to God. Pagadevanay vidda yellapudus stotthram chayvalenno.
Devanay stotthrikkada, stotthrikkasstotthrika, kirubai perukul.
As we keep on praising God, grace will abound. Stotthram chayichunduka kripavistarilichunduno.
Anegarude stotthratthinalae, kirubai perugugirathendru vedathilaina parkurum.
Read in the word of God, grace abounds with the thanksgiving of many. Anekuliyaka krituthantha sthutulavala kripavistarilichunadi.
Stotthram vannodhu enbadu adurukkadan.
Giving thanks is a duty. Stotthram chaita vaka pugavunadi.
2nd Thessalonians, 3 avasana.
2nd Thessalonians, chapter 1, verse 3. 2nd Thessalonians, 45tham nirvayakuttavakimma.
Sahudharere, naan yappudum ungalakaha devanay stotthrikkay kadannaligala idukkaram.
Adurukkadan.
That is a bond. Adurukkadan.
Avarkai devanay thudippadu, eyertavadu, mai meppadutavadu, avarude thudiyay solivur mudiaga, namellarum neer padutha padavarkal.
To exalt God, magnify God, glorify God, to show forth his praise, all have been have been appointed. Devanisthutinchitakku mai mepparchitakku manam andrum neer parchibonnavaaramo.
Philippiar, 4tham madhigaram chaita parkumbadu.
When we see in Philippines, chapter 4. Philippine 4tham nirvayakuttavakimma.
6 avasana.
Verse 6. 6vakimma.
Ningal ondukum kavali padamal, ellavachikuruthu ungal vinnapanglay, stotthratthodi kudiyajabethinalam, veldhalinalam devanukka teriappaduthungal.
Yellavatilni stotthram chayidu, aandavarekaadu teriappaduthida podumannadu.
In everything we have to give thanks to God, it will be sufficient if we make no debt to God. Anneedikis stotthram chesidu devanke telijesnatidu chalino.
Avaporunali knam evalu nairu stotthram pandro.
Then for how long a day do we praise God? Pagadevamakke intasipu stotthram chayichunam.
364, 44, 44, 44.
I think we have crossed 364 days this year. 44, 44.
Avapibon namakullai evalu stotthram manirupo.
How much you would have praised God? Maname entega stotthram chesiyunam.
Avarkai devanay arendum.
Though they knew God. Or devanirukiyu.
Mai meppadutamalum irundhu.
They glorified him not as God. Mahimuparchalaidu.
Stotthriyamalum irundhu.
Neither were thankful. Stotthram chayikundavadi.
Avarkai sindhilai veenar aanargal.
Became vain in their imaginations. Variyakkavritiyamila verthulai irai.
Unarvillada orudayirudheyum iruladendudu.
The foolish heart without understanding was darkened. Variyakavivikaavritiyam andhakaram ayenno.
Vedam enna sollukkara.
What is the Bible saying? Vaakimayuvan chappuchinadi.
Stotthram baliedugavan ennay mai meppadutukram.
He who offered praise glorified me. Stutiyagavu arpinchavudunna mai mepparchichunadu.
50tham sanghidaam, 23 avasana.
Psalm 50, verse 23. Yabayakkithanirvayam nirvayakuttavakimma.
Stotthram baliedugavan ennay mai meppadutukram.
Avapidilunna enna vilangikulukkara?
From this what we understand? Veetlundi aimithelskunuchinam.
Stotthram enbadu mikamukkiyamana.
Praising is very important. Stotthramanadi athyaavasramagavunadi.
61tham sanghidaam, 30tham avasana chaita parkumbadu.
When we see Psalm 59, verse 30. 63tham nirvayakuttavakimma.
Devanade naamatey paatinaal thudithu, avare stotthratthinal mai meppadutuvain.
Yippidilallana namvilangikradu, devanay mai meppadutukradu, thudikkadu enbadu nammela vilundha oru kadamai.
From this we understand glorifying, giving thanks to God is a duty that has fallen upon us. Devanay mai mepparchita sthutinchitaman ikkarkthaviyam gavunadi.
Ananal namadhi evva endhavathutla seluthukuruvani enakke diriyala.
But we do not know how we are offering that. Manameela kuchesiyuchinamotheliyadu.
Idhayo, Hosea 14, 2 chaita parkumbadu.
When we see this Hosea, chapter 14, verse 2. Hosea 14tham nirvayakuttavakimma.
Vartegalikundu katradathuthirummungal, avare noke devaree, illa akramateem neekke, engleidaiyavai angikarithalum, appudus naangal, engal udadugalin kaalagale seluthu.
Stotthram enbadu oru kaalay.
Praising is a cough. Stotthramanakavka edlugavunadi.
Udadugalin kaalay.
It's a cough of a lips. Pedavaleena edlayunnavi.
Innaradathilarekku udadugalin kaniyage stotthribali.
In other words, we read an offering of praise that is the fruit of a lips. Inkakosthalamal chudduchinam jifukvalamana sthutiyagavamo.
Avapivagallarunna namenna vilangikulukkaro?
From this what do we understand? Veetlundi aimithelskunuchinam.
Nam devanay stotthrikkave sistike padavarkal.
We have been created to praise God. Devanisthutinchitakku man system padnavaaramo.
Hebrew year, 13, 15.
Hebrews, chapter 13, verse 15. Hebrew 13, 15.
Aahayal, avarude naamatey thudikkum, udadugalin kaniyage stotthribaliye, avarmulamai epoodum devanukka seluthakadavam.
Naayedukkida sollitavara?
Why am I telling this? En indukkida enna chappuchinam.
Indukkada allarukka diriyoo.
All of you know about this? Neandarki telinu?
Anana, idhesheluthaadu danaale, oru uuliyakkaranukke, oru viswasiikkin nadakkaradana, kerdu enna?
What is?
Adai pashtiri pilla namen, first parta parkuparo.
What is the worst thing that will happen to a worker or a believer if he doesn't offer praise? Stotthram chayikupadu avakkasavakunki viswaski, en haani kaluganani sudhikaranala madhri bhagamka chuchinadu.
Avarkai stotthriyamalum mai meppadutamalum irundhu, sindhilai veenar aanargal.
They glorified him, neither were thankful, they became vain in their imaginations. Var stotthrichukunda mai mepparchukundavadi, thamika talampuliyandu verthulai.
Ningal devanay thudikkamayirukala, anana, ningal sindhilai veenarai maruvirakal.
You may refrain from praising God, but you will have vain imaginations. Devanisthutinchukundavundavachinam, thamika talampulayam manslay verthuligam maruduru.
Ningal devanay thudikkamalirukala, anana, ungalirudheyum iruladinchupoyikadakum.
You may stop from praising God, but your heart will be darkened. Devanisthutinchukundavundavachinam, thamikaavritiyam andhakaramagunnu.
Idhella vache kattilam.
More than all these. Veetlundi kantepayga?
Idhdevanay thudiyamalirukkaranale, 3 kariyengalukke devam, oru manidhanay opukudukkara.
By not praising God, God gives a man to three things. Devanisthutinchukundavundavalla manshunidhdevudukkamodukkariyamla kapakichuchinadu.
Ippuningidhdevanay stotthram maningala, eetha vidathila mai meppaduthitingala, appudingaradu, ippuningakandupadigala.
Now you can find whether you have praised God, you have given thanks to him in the right way that is meet for you. Sarigasthutinchidhdevanay mai mepparchinarani, prumir kanuganavachunu?
Devanay thudikkalenna, 3 kariyadukke devame opukudukkara.
If you don't praise God, God himself gives us three things. Devanisthutinchukupadu 3 kariyamla kududummanan apakichuchinadu.
1.
One. Akatti.
Romans, modala madhigaram, 24 avasana.
Romans, chapter 1, verse 24. Rama matrathiyam nirvayakuttavakimma.
Idinivittum avarkai thangal irudhyathrullai ichseghalinaale, oruvarodaruvu, thangal sarirangalai avamana padutathakadaga, devanavargalai asutthathirkukku opukadutha.
Yippidhdevanay ningal thudikkalai, mai meppadutala, andha jabanarathila katara eyertala, illa kaalay elumbi katara mai meppadutala, eravala padukkambothu devanay thudikkalai, illa nairangidakkumorudhu katara thudikkira, andha uuliyathirinigavuditingen chunnaa, devan ungal enesirare, asutthathirkukku opukudukkara.
If you leave of praising God, glorifying God in the morning and refrain from giving thanks to him in the evening, and stop doing the ministry of praising God always, the Lord gives you up to uncleanness. Devanisthutinchukundavmai mepparchukundav, udhimana raathre kuda devanisthutinchukundad, sthutinchusavakchukundavunatleite, devudummanan apavithrathakapakichunno?
2nd.
Secondly. 26. Verse 26. 26vakimma.
Idinivittum devanavargalai ilivana ichseghalangalukku opukadutha.
Idh2ndavukkarayam.
This is the second thing. Idh2ndavukkarayam.
2nd, elivana ichseghal.
Secondly, vile afflictions. 2ndavukka thuchumaynabilashalu.
Yedanala oru viswasi, oru uuliyakkara, elivana ichseghal, idhipattavallamela thakappadu, en asutthathirkulavam maati kolu, naladana idundha, avridilani neenikala.
You may think why a believer or a worker is being affected by vile diseases, you may think he was good. Kasavakal viswasa chala bhagunnaargani, entukvar thuchumaynabilashalukka apavithrathakapakichubunnavanani, neenankavunavachunu?
Ningal thudiyamalirukkambadu, automatica idhipattavallamegal ungalavenda aalukeshaya arabhithuvudukkara, devanum adarku opukudukkara.
When you refrain from praising God, automatically these powers come to reign over you, God also offers you to those things.
28 avasana.
Verse 28. 28vakimma.
Devanay areyum arve, patthikondrukka avarulukka manadillamandhrindabidiyal, takadavigale sayimbadi, devanavargalai keedana sindhaiku opukadutha.
3nd, keedana sindhai.
Thirdly, a reprobate mind. 4th, brasthamanasu.
Ningal devanay thudikkadu danaale, indha varisathila, idhipattapadilani ningal ilithukollapadripirukal.
Just because you do not praise God, you would have been pulled to these kind of paths this year. Devanisthutinchukundavunandhavani, saunchram latevante markamla velichu undavachunu?
1, asuttham.
One uncleanness. Akatti apavithratha.
2nd, elivana ichseghal.
Two vile afflictions. 2ndavukka thuchumaynabilashalu.
3nd, keedana sindhai.
Thirdly, reprobate mind. 4th, brasthamaynanasu.
Idhvandhey, ena pidi vandrichi, namasindhasarilaupodhey, pakkaradhalan tapapakramay, enngaradhalan tapavarde, namavandaadhalan chenchikidukkaramay, namukpudupuduvyadi, asingamana, aruvupana, cholla kudada, vyadi, belavinan namalavande touchpundadu, idhridilani neenifillpanduvenga, anana, idhunde effect enna, ni devanay sariyai thudikkavallai.
You may be thinking why these sinful thoughts are coming to me, why all these unclean things are happening to me, why I am looking at things in a wrong way, why all these vile afflictions and vile diseases are coming to me, but the root cause for all these things is you have not praised God. Indukkani illaganukunuchinam, chuchinanti, tapuganukunuchinano, apavithrathne laavurpachinano, entukilagana gamaan devan sariyana ritvashtithichalakappunandhavalna?
Seraabengal thudippadu ungalakke diriyoo.
You know the Seraphim's praising God. Seraappal devanisthutinchitam ikkatalinu?
Eerabengal thudippadu ungalakke diriyoo.
You know about Seraphim's praising God. Kerubul sthutinchitam ikkatalinu?
Yes, I, Atthirka Thirsnapustagam, 6tham madhigaram chaita, avunge appudithudikkiranganne cholla padukkara.
In Isha, chapter 6, it is mentioned how they are praising God. Esya 6tham nirvayakuttavakimma.
Seraabengal appudithudikkirarakal.
How do the Seraphim's praise God? Seraappal ellagasthutinchuchinadu.
Avukka 6 settekal.
They have six wings. Varikya 6 rekhalu.
2 settegalal, avargal parakkarakal.
With two wings they fly. 2 rekhalata eguruchinadu.
2 settegalal, padangalai moodikkolukkarakal.
With two feet they cover their feet. 2 rekhalata padamla kapukunuchinadu.
2 settegalal, mugathai moodikkolukkarakal.
With two wings they cover their face. 2 rekhalata mugamuna kapukunuchinadu.
Amara enna arta?
What is the meaning of it? Ante arta meemi?
Oruvarum seerakudada olliyil vasamunugaravare tarisikeye engalakke tagudhiyil.
We are not worthy to meet the person who dwells in light, which no man can approach them to. Yaavarnu samutnuparani tejasala vasinchinatvadi, devanichuchikakamakasayogiyathalaidu.
Aha, parisuthasthalathil nirkkadukke engalakke tagudhiyil.
We are not worthy to stand in the most holy place. Athiparsuthasthalamal nirchitakamakayogiyathalaidu.
Avare parkavod, avarude samugathil nirkavod, engalakke tagudhiyilenchulida, avuga parandukkide, senegalinkathar, parisuthar, parisuthar, parisutharenchulidhira.
Seeing that they have no worthiness to see him or stand in his presence only, they keep on flying and say, holy, holy, holy is a lot of hosts. Ayakasanaadu neelichitakka, karabuttakka, yogiulakka aman chappi, eguruchu, ekova parshuddidu, parshuddidu navachappiunnavu.
Indha varisathila evalu kada besirupo.
How much you would have talked this year? Is saunchramla entega maatladuyunam.
Evalu venvarthegal besirupo.
How much vain words you have spoken? Entamandu verthamana maatlapalkiyunam.
Olliyathupathi evalu thavara besirupo.
How much wrongfully you have spoken over the ministry? Seevanukuruchinandu tapugamaa maatladuyunam.
Olliyathupathi evalu thavara besirupo.
How much wrongfully we have spoken about the servants of God? Seevukulukuruchinandu tapugamaa maatladuyunam.
Umadeshathukku marana karthukkal evalu besirupo.
How much of thoughts we have spoken, given against a doctor? Opadeshamla kumvivethraikamana tharudamal maatladuyunam.
Viswasiyilakku oradama evalu besirupo.
Against believers, how much you have spoken? Viswasa lvrudhamkantham maatladuyunam.
Ullasandha sagodara sagodriyilakku oradama evalu besirupirakal.
Against your own brethren and sisters, how much you might have spoken? Santasagodara sagodri vrungantham maatladuyunnavu.
Evalu urukada besirupinga.
How much unwanted tales you would have spoken? Enta urukathala maatladuyundavachunu?
Evalu naattinadappukal, arasiyala besirupinga.
How much you have spoken about the politics and things which are happening in the country? Entega mirdesamla rajkii mulukacham maatladuyunnavu.
Ningalayoschuparanga.
You think about it. Talanchichoodandi.
Jabanarathila enna kariyangal besininga.
What were the things you spoke during the time of prayer? Pradhana sammyamla eyakarumma maatladuyunnavu.
Manavarka besinu, ovor veenana varthekkam, avun kanaku kodukkavendam.
For everyone that idle words that man speaks, he has to give account. Manushilapalkaratvadi verthamana maatlamachilakka apakichuvalenno.
Ketta varthegal 1, ungal vaialarundhu porakkavendam.
That no corrupt communication proceed out of your mouth. Dharupashalayade, me notrindu baildarakududu.
Keetkarakku bhaktivirithikaidu vana varthegal idundhaal, adhey besingay.
If there are words of edification to hear, speak only those words. Umitakukshemaavritikalavichim maatlanamathrami palakandi.
Ungal evalu jabanarathini ningal venaki, evalu nairu cellula besirupinga.
How much of free time you might have wasted and stopped in yourself? Pradhana sammyamla adhupachin, entega mirdesamla maatladuyundavachunu?
Thavaraanak conversation evalu vunduchin, yoschuparanga.
You think how much of wrong conversation you had? Enta tapayin sambashanam ikkalkuyunadi?
Devan ellavachikadukkara.
God has heard everything. Devudanneedikuviluvunnavu.
Kattarukku bhandavarkal besikulvargal, avarkavani thay, keetpar, artha, ellai engarukka, nyabuga? Pustakathil edhappadukkam, adhul edhappadutle, ni thudichadu edhappadukkuma, ni sabichadu edhappadukkuma, ni duushadu edhappadukkuma, ni devanay mai meppadutunadu edhappadukkuma?
Indeed, few of the Lord spoke often one to another, the Lord hearkened and heard it, and a book of remembrance was written before him, the things which you were praising God, or glorifying God, blaspheming God, or praising God, what will be written there? Devanindha Bible thilakalavara maatlanan vanchu undu, varikam maatlaniknapakapustukamavrayeno, neev devanisthutinchunadi, devanidhushinchunadi, ikkamigirinakariyamle kudakana padunno.
Indikavosindha ketupoyirche.
Now your mind has become corrupted. Meekamansu chedipoyunadi?
Pakkavangalallan thavara pakkara.
You look at all the people whom you see, you look them in a wrong way. Chuchinavani tapugachuchinam.
Poemangal ketupoyirche.
Your thoughts have been corrupted. Talampulay chedipoyunnavi.
Mosamana palaviyadigal unodu poradukkara.
So many worse sicknesses are fighting with you. Mosamana paravyadhalitha poraduchunnavi.
Aruvupana vyadigal unodu poradukkara.
Abominable sicknesses are fighting with you. Keemana vayadhalitha poraduchunnavi.
Unna arinjio ariyamaloni asutthathrlachikukrai.
Knowing or unknowingly, you've been caught in uncleanness. Telsi telikunna apavithrathal pattabadiyunnavu.
Oh, manusukketukkara.
Your mind is being defined. Manusukchetupaduyunadi?
Ollsari raasusi padukkara.
Your body is being corrupted. Sariram apavithramakachunadi?
Idhikalakkaarnam enna?
What is the reason for these? Itantiki kaaranameme?
Devane, unni opukudukkara alavala, ungal thudiyum stotthramum koranju poivatada.
Your praising and thanksgiving have come down that God himself might offer you to these things. Devudunni napakichunatlikka, neesutthi stotthramatagi poivunadi?
Ni sindhilai veenana irukkara.
You have become vain in your imagination. Manusayandu verthuligam maruyunnavu.
Indikavavalamana sundanegal vandukundae irukkara.
Words filthy thoughts are coming to your mind. Thuchumaynathalampulavachuchunnavi.
Yarapattalan thavaraanayenngal.
Whomsoever you see, you have wrong thoughts. Yavani chuchinandu tapayinathalampulu.
Yarapattalam amsiyamana sindhai.
If you look at any person, you have a conal thought. Yavani chuchinandu saridhanasarumana.
Keedana sindhai unodu poradikundukkara.
A reprobate mind is fighting with you. Brasthamanseetha poraduchunnavi.
Amasa sindhai maranam.
To be conally minded is death. Saridhamanseemaranamo.
Idhallakkaarnam enna?
What is the cause for all these? Idhikkaarnameme?
Idhiku veer, ni thudiyamalus stotthriyamalum irundhu.
The root for all these is you have refrained from praising and giving thanks to God. Veetliku veeriyadu neenisthutinchukundav, stotthrunchukundavunandhavala.
Neenjabanarathilallan kada edichu, kada edichu, kada edichu, time wastepanni, ipopisasukaila unni opukudukthu male, opukudukthu pole, unakkenikasuttham, keedana sindhai, elivana ichseghal.
All the time you had, you wasted, you spoke unwanted things, you kept on talking, talking, wasted all your time, now you have been given up to uncleanness, vile afflictions, and a reprobate mind. Pradhana sammyamal adhupachinavukkathalana maatladu, iprapavithrathakuthuchumaynabilashalak, brasthamanseekapakichubunnavu.
Ipo onelavanna?
Now what is your state? Ippunneekasthutiyadi?
Idheneelavathilani, adhutvarsha boona, appudirukko?
If you go in this same state with the next year, what will be? Idhisthutilavachis, saunchram chachinatlikka thailagundu?
Naor pathinibundan taintartha.
I give you 10 minutes time. Pathinibundam samyamichudunu?
Yenakorusutiripu ingavarada, naunna pakkala.
I have not seen a cleansing coming here. Neeninkakidavakusudhikanachoodalaidu?
Oru pathrata kaluvanasutthama arka, illan patha thirima thiriyada?
If a vessel is cleaned, we will know whether it is cleaned or not. Avakapathran chuchinatlikka, shubramgavunadhalaidu telidha?
Sutthiriplav, oru kanneerilada, oru sutthiriupu, adhiyamathu.
A cleansing without tears is deceiving one. Kanneerul enatvante sudhikaranavanchinchitayunadi?
On sagodri kallathanamai manandrimbinala, enri unmayayenirathil, manandrimbi varadalai, enna katarcholrar.
The Lord is telling a sister, return to him falsely but not truly. Neevkasa godri payveshamakke thiriyunadu, gani, yedharthamka thirigaladhan devudchappuchinadu.
Uduvarisathikaavoh, rabaojanathikaavoh, ungal parisuthamakavendam, ipnekavon kannamoodana parlavathukporadu kaagani, parisuthapadikuvendam.
Don't sanctify yourself for the new year or for the communion service, that if you close your eyes today, that you might go to heaven.
Ni pakkada rabaojanama, ni pakkada communionana, ni pakkada prasangama.
Is this the communion that you have not seen, or the new year you have not seen, or a message that you have not heard? Neevichoodanatvante prabharathirabochimmasokkathasamchrima unadha?
Ellavungalakke diriyoo.
You know everything. Annyu telinu?
Ananikisutthiri pungaradu, kanneeril thodangattu.
Let cleansing begin with tears today. Sudhikanak, kanneerilaparaminchanim.
Ellarangalalaimoduva?
Let's all close our eyes. Andharkalamuskanidamo.
Indha janathay enakaha neer paduthenain.
These people are formed for myself. Ijenlanak, nakarka eerpadukkayana?
Ivarkai neenudiyayavuruvarkal.
They shall show forth my praise. Veernasthutinipracharam chayidu?
Ni thudikkumadiyagaave, indha sabikulakondorapattava.
You have been brought into this church only to praise God. Sthutinchidukkaisangamakuthaebadiyunnavu?
Annyeen naamatey vaningikundrunna onnay, enthandrum devanay thudikkumadiyaga, nitthi nitthimaay, katharodu irundhu, katharimai meppadutumadiyaga, devanun ngiyekunduvandhar.
To praise you God forever, to be with the Lord always, the Lord has brought you to here, you were after worshipping after a strange God. Annyaddevatalka pochinchunna, neenaddevanke netthiyanithemga stotthram chaituke, anni neekadu thiskunuvachinunnavu?
Ungal ethanavaru unarthapadukkari.
How many of you are being convicted? Entanandhi grainchuchinadu?
En time na wastepannitha.
I have wasted my time. Na sammyamal arthapachinunnavu?
Devasamugathena wastepannitha.
I have wasted the presence of God. Devanisudhikunnaverthamchesiyunnavu?
Indikinam keedana sindhilai maati kundukkara, elivana ichseghalangalasikirukkara, asutthamana palaporadangal, yenakulla maranjigadakadu, idhikalakkaarnan enna nathiriyamarunna, anana, indikinam unarukkara, devanay thudikkalai, adhilakoranchittha.
Today I am having so many struggles of uncleanness, I have vile afflictions, I have reprobate mind, all these things are hidden in me, today I have found the cause for all these things, I have not praised God. Ippunnaal, brasthamanseetha thamaynabilashal, apavithrathalakannupachinavu, idantiki kaarunnavu, ipthelskunuyunnavu, neev devanisthutinchulaidu?
Apri unarthapadavakangalibodibolangal padiduva?
Those who convicted like that, let us close our eyes and kneel down. Alagaram, p5var kalamuskanamokarichudamu?
Yaravil nairanjikattanunavasiyamilai, thirkattharsnajolunavasiyamilai.
There is no need to speak in unknown tongues and prophesy. Yavaru gattikakakalavesi, annyavapachram chappavadu?
Adhikana time kodupavavi, anarwaruvaradi, yenakke diriyoo.
I will give time for this foot of God will come, I know about it. Neen samyamayichudunna, devanatma apavuchunnu?
Ippuni asutthathirlarundhu veliyeva?
Now you come out of uncleanness. Ippunneevapavithrathunna baitikaram.
Keedana sindhilai arundhu veliyeva?
You come out of a reprobate mind. Brasthamanseethanidu baitikaram.
Elivana ichseghal, rohatthirlarundhu veliyeva?
Come out of vile afflictions. Thuchumaynabilashalunidu baitikaram.
Adhikuvore vali, neenrikimaribodiyum devanay mai meppadutavendam, devanay thudikkavendam.
There is only one way for it, why, again you have to glorify God, you have to give thanks to God. Vakemargamud devanisthutinchavanna, devanay mai mepparchavaleno?
Ellar, ellar, konjinaarav, kathode samugathila, aandavare, indha varisathila, yenakke thudikkumadiyaga kadaitha nairath, nan sariyanavidathila bayanbadutle, adhiyena kummanimandru vaayathirundhu kadaranaga.
It's all open a mouth and cry, let's every one of us cry, Lord, the time I wasted, the time you have given me to praise you. Devana kichunatvadi samyamal sthutinchukundan, neen verthapachinanani, nor thercipudumam keekalaveshu devanay thadigadamu?
Ni maribodiyan devanay thudippadu unmayanala.
If it is true that you are again praising God. Marla devanisthutinchavastha.
Maribodi, ni devanay mai meppadutuvadu unmayanala.
If it is true that you are again glorifying God. Marla devanisthutinchavastha.
Unney asutthathirkukku opukudutha devan, unney parisuthathirkukku opukudupar.
God who gave you to uncleanness will give you to holiness. Neen apavithrathakapakichunnavu, devudupasuthathakapakichunnu?
Unne keedana sindhikku opukuduthavark, unney aviin sindhikku opukudupar.
He who gave you to reprobate mind will give you to a spiritual mind. Brasthamaynamansukapakichunnavu, devudhaatmeemansukapakichunnu?
Elivana ichseghalangalukku opukudutha devan, unakusukathayum, savukathayum, arokiathayum, indha kutthathil katleeduva.
He who gave you up to vile afflictions will come on health and healing for you this meeting. Thuchumaynabilashakapakichunnavu, devudukkutamlasvasthatino, arokiyamani, kummalarapinchunnu?
Ananambi kuvulavarkal, aandavare, umay thudikkumadiyaga kodutha nairathai, nan mai meppadutamal vidduvudan, enamani vandavare, enna kailangal.
Although I realized that, say, Lord, I have wasted the time you have given me to praise you, please forgive me. Sudhinchunatvadi samyamal arthapachinadu, shaminchandhi prabhanchappi, manandrumadigadamu? I realized that you wasted the time God gave you in the presence of God. Devuduchinassamyam arthapachinadu?
English good.
Engrainchuchinadu?
English is all in good. Ungal ethraavera, devunaradiriyaga?
How many if I realized it? Entamandhi grainchuchinadu?
Aandavare, yenak, tanay thudikkumadiyaga, jabi kumadiyaga, enay danay mai meppadutumadiyaga, enay unarti yavi, yenak, tayata alahaga ayathupaduthikudutar, nan, adhi porakani thayen.
The Lord asked me, asked me to pray, gave me beautiful time to pray, to praise him, to glorify him, but I have wasted it. Devunakuchakakasthutinchikku, mai mepparchikku, samyamichinadu, enna visarjinchu, nanu?
Enay unarthinan nairam undu.
There were times when God convicted me. Naan grainchuchis, samyamunadi?
Thudikkumadiyaga, jabi kumadiyaga, mai meppadutumadiyaga, devanay enay yedupinan nairangal undu.
There were times God made me to get up, to praise him, to glorify him, to pray. Sthutinchikku mai mepparchikku, devanal leepinasamyamulunnavi?
Nanaday, obayavapaduthavillai.
But I did not make you suffer. Neenidana upuyoginsalaidu?
Devam enay manikavendam.
God has to forgive me. Devunakshaminchavaleno?
En kudumbathai manikavendam.
God has to forgive my family. Na kudumbamakshaminchavaleno?
Nan taniyaga mattumalak, kudumbamaga, devanay thudippadu nirthiirukkara, enay manikavendam.
Not individually, as a family, I have stopped praising God, the Lord has to forgive me. Vektikathamakadukkutumbamak, devanisthutinchramaani, mesiyanand, devanakshaminchavaleno?
Devanay enay maniparanaal.
If God forgives me. Devanakshaminchunatleite.
Devanayenakayarakam sayvaranaal.
If God shows mercy on me. Devunakankaram.
Indha kutthathil, devanadhyadayavu, yenak, kadaikumana.
If I have the favor of God in this meeting. Ikutthamla devanay dayanakudorkinatleite?
Asutthathirlarundhu, yenak, kuvidhalaitara vendam.
He has to give me deliverance from uncleanness. Apavithrathalakku, yenak, viddhalivalenu?
Keedana sindhilai arundhu, yenak, kuvidhalaitara vendam.
He has to give me deliverance from a reprobate mind. Brasthamaynamansukchunnavu?
Elivana ichseghal, rohatthirlarundhu, yenak, kuvidhalaitara vendam.
He has to deliver me from vile afflictions. Thuchumaynabilashalunnavu?
Oru 2 nimishanidha pointavachin, neenik jabiinga.
For 2 minutes you keep this point in prayer. 2 nimishal, nee pamsavakarakprathan sayindi?
Aandavare, nan umay thudippa.
Lord, I will praise you. Prabha, neenisthutinchadu?
Yenakulla jeevanulla mattum, yenoo jeevanumay thudikkam.
As long as I live, my life will praise you. Na jeevanunthavarkasudhinchun.
Yen sandhadi umay thudikkam.
My seed will praise you. Na santathenavu sthutinchunnu?
Ah, man. Okkaro. Peri manalai, idh kadaesi, anasutthiri pukkada, okkargala, okkarga.
Beloved, this is the last sanctification meeting. Premaal, chivar shudhikana kutthamo?
Idh ningal bayanbadikavano?
Make you suffer. Deenamirupuyoginskanandi?
Aviyana, varyevanadu, namgasolro.
What of the spirit of God urged to be attending? Devanay atma prayrepinchunnavu, meem chappuchinam.
Anana, neenke idhkaappalau, ungalasutthirikkenu?
But beyond this also you have to cleanse yourselves. Veenikantemirvulay shudhikranchukkamavale?
Ungaraneelavara, ungalakke diriyoo.
You know your own state. Neenisthutimikatelinu?
Endhavidathila yavadu, indha kutthangala, neenkel devanodu, ungalai kai korthuvadavendam.
In some way you have to clasp your hands with God. Ellagane, ikkutthamala, me devantachathil kalapavale?
Nan yedukkakanneeril, sutthiriupu, kanneerilathodanganaada, gembirathila mudiyam.
Only if cleansing starts with tears, it will end in with joy. Sudhikanak, kanneerilaparaminchanim, utshahadvantaika, kutthamamigunchubadu?
Kanneerilamma, 3 nalsutthiri poodukkana fasting edutha, na olanga kutthathukbona, avridin chunnaa, adhul, ni veena vedavada channartho?
If you say that you have taken fasting, you have gone for all the 3 days meetings without tears, it means that you have received even vain. Kanneetu, meelakundam, morudinam, shudhikanakutthamakochinamante, yerdagana, vitanamavithiyunnavu?
Maridhalitha, i payudhre, manangasandha aludha.
Peter who denied, he wept bitterly. Yerigunani chappunapethru santapavadiyachinu?
Adhattha, indikisabai, deva edirpaarkara, sabai.
That is what the Lord is expecting from the church today. Danunudh devu sangaamunudh edrichuchinadu?
Aluvana?
Will he cry?
Idhene odayima?
Will his heart break? Thudiyamavathalaguna?
Manastavaduvana?
Will he repent? Firsta thappaduna?
Opuravaiduvana?
Will he get reconciled? Samadhana paduna?
Nipukedruvana?
Will he ask forgiveness? Shamaapanaaduguna?
En edirpaarpai neravettituvana?
Will he fulfill my expectation? Na edrichupan neravetchunna?
Adhala sutthiripladu devanade nokka.
That is the purpose of sanctification. Adheshudhikannakudhdesamagavunadi?
Anallan, neenke, naan chunnavaasana thamattu, achikali vithi, neenipayakudada, mochilama opukuduthan, vilundhiraga, aandodha padathala.
Therefore you should not cleanse yourselves, according to the verses that I tell you, holy, offer yourself, surround yourself, fall in the feet of the Lord. Neen chappinam maatralavakimmatramekakonda, pootthikadu, devan padamyathapadipodi?
Adh ningasariyachayinunna, na vilumbadu.
I decide that you have to do it properly. Mid sarigathsevalanikoruchinadu?
Ulliyargal, viswasiyagal, pudiya viswasiyagal, valibargal, vayodhibargal, ellaro, naalik rabaojan edukkano, pudiya varisathapudushathodangano, avridin, nambaravanga, virumbaravanga, vaanjikaravanga, viswasiyikaravanga, sariyanasutthiriupu, kattukkala vendam.
Although who want to take communion in the new year in a new way, you have to receive a proper cleansing, whether you may be workers or believers or young or old or any person. Krathsamchamla prabhabala, palupandavalsina, savakalennu, viswaslennu, krathaviswaslennu, yavanasalennu, peddavaraen, chinnavarrenu, seven rithramal shudhikranchukkamavale?
Onurajakal.
First Kings. Odithi rachin.
15tham madhigaram.
Chapter 19. 15tham nirvayakuttavakimma.
8th, 15tham avasana.
Verses 8 and 9. Enamidithomdivakimlu?
Appudusavan, yedundirundhu, pusithu, kudithu, andha bhaojanathin balathinala, naathpanala, iravumbaga, iravupagal, oreipinam devanade parvada mattum nadanthupana. Appadu devan erindirundhu pusithu kudithu, andha bojanathin balathinall, naathpanall iravumbagal, iravupagal, ooreppinam devanidiparvadamattum nadanthupunna. Angi devan urkabikal poithangina, idho kathrathivaaththi amanikundagi, aver eliyavey ingey unaki ennakariminda.
Padinavasana.
Appadu aver nee veliyevandhu katharukkumunbaga parvathathil nillyenda.
Podo. Inge, oru vallamayana devanidemanishanodu, devan pesukarad.
Here God is speaking to a powerful man of God.
Ikudavakashaktiavantavani devachinathathodhodamartladuchinadu.
Oru beriyathirkadarisi.
He was a great prophet.
Gopapravaktha.
Devanidakaratillirundhamanishan.
He was a man who was in the hand of God.
Devaniasstamalavunavikti.
Devanakumunbaga nirkaran manidhanindru, avan thanthi aarimukupaduthukarad.
About himself, he introduces that he is a man who stands before God.
Devanisannidhalanilichinaviktiyannithanigurichiparchayamchachinadu.
Onurajakal, padinellu, ontri.
First Kings, chapter seventeen, verse one.
Madhutirajjala padiyavadyamathitivakam.
Geelyaathin kodigalile, tispianahi eliyah, aha binokey, en vakiinpadiendhi, indha varshangalile, panayum, marayum payyadurukumindhi, isravelin devanah, yekatharukumunbaga nirkaranan, orude jeevanikonda selugreenindha.
Katharude, jeevanikonda pesukaramanishan choldra, na katharukumunbaga nirkaran.
The person who is speaking by the life of God is telling, I am the person who is standing before God.
Ekhova jeevanuthodinmattladuchinavikti, devanisannidhalanilichinavannanichapputsunadu.
Katharukumunbaga nirkaranindru thanthi aarimukupaduthukarad.
He introduces himself that he is a man standing before God.
Devaniyaduthanilichinaviktiyannithanigurichiparchayaparchinunadu.
Aana ippa avan katharukumunbaga nikkele.
But now he is not standing before God.
Ipuraidhe devaniyaduthanilobadaledu.
Ipo Onurajakal patambo dupadinundla kathar choldra, nee veliyevandhu enakkumunbaga nil.
Now in First Kings.
Palayamadri vandhu nil, apriindukkare.
First Kings, chapter nineteen, verse eleven, the Lord says, you come out and stand before me as you used to do in the past.
Madhutirajjala pandamdavadyam padakundavakamulapapaatharitika, marlanakasannidhalanilobanidevaduchapputsunadu.
Oru kalahtla ningellaarme katharukumunbaga nintra vargalda.
Once upon a time, you all had standing before God.
Vakanakakalamal mirandhad devanithalilichinavare.
Adiyavamathila parkumbaduva.
When we see in Genesis.
Adhikandamalachachinappudu.
Vedamenna solukarade.
What does the scripture say?
Vakamayamachapputsunadu.
Abraham devanakumunbaga nintra kundruntha orunabhar.
Abraham was a person who was standing before God.
Abraham devanithalilichinavikti.
Adiyavamam padinatti, ivati, irande.
Genesis, chapter eighteen, verse twenty-two.
Adhikandampatchimdavadyamirvirendavakam.
Appadu andha purushar avitamittu sodhumenoki ponaargal, abrahamo, pinnum katharukumunbaga ninddukundanda.
Katharukumunbaga nirkaraadha oru viswasiyinudayaalaga.
Standing before the Lord is a beauty of a believer.
Devanithalilichitakvisvasikasoundariyamayunadu.
Adhala oru ulya karunudayaalaga.
That is the beauty of a servant of God.
Adhivakasevakunikasoundariyamayunadu.
Katharukumunbaga ninnaadha ni arpuddangalay chayvai.
Only if you stand before God, you will do wonders.
Devanithalilichinappadatbutamalani chayiduva.
Even katharukumunbaga nintra buludhe.
When he stood before the Lord.
Veeridhey devanithalilichinappudu.
Unudewalkila nandhasambavamenna.
What happened in his life?
Veeridhey jeetamajirinassambavamayi.
Malaya niruthinan.
He stopped the rain.
Varshamanapavestinu.
Elavatal vanaaththi adaitaan.
Otherwise he shut the heaven.
Akasamunamushivestinu.
Maniyeniruthinan.
He stopped the dew.
Manchunapavestinu.
Adhutthi katharukumunbaga nintra badinala vanaaththi tirandhan.
Next, because he stood before the Lord, he opened heaven.
Devanithalilichitavana akasamunathirchinu.
Katharukumunbaga nintra naatkal, oru vilayerepetra naatkal.
The days he stood before the Lord were precious days.
Devanithalilichinathidinamulamamuliamanidinam.
Adhira prakashamakkappattanaatkal.
There were days in which he was enlightened.
Prakashimubandhadinamalu.
Thanudhey jabathle avanakunichayamulla naatkal.
Days in which he had assurance in his prayers.
Praardanlanishtayamulla dinamalu.
Adhutthada avanipadithinaparkumbaduva.
Next about whom when we see.
Tarvathagathanigurichachinappudu.
Akkiniyavanaathillirundhu yarakina oru manidhan.
He was a person who brought fire from heaven.
Aggrunyavana akasamunidhimpeena vadu.
Avan javichaa parlavathillirundhu pratthiyachamaga devathunudaya akkini balibadathila yarango.
If he prays evidently, the fire of the Lord will descend from God on the altar.
Adhutthi pradhantchesinadu the pratthiyachamada devanikadni akasamunidhim.
Apri oru prayer life avanakirundadu.
He had such a prayer life.
Adhutthi pradhana jeetamundu.
Thanudhey jabathle avanakurunichayam.
He had a certainty in his prayers.
Praardanlanishtayatuvunadu.
Nan javithaal, en devam amen poduva.
If I pray, my God will put amen for it.
Neenupradinchinadu devadu amen chappunu.
Andhalaavu avanakunichayamirundha oru kaalam.
To that extent, those for the days he had certainty.
Akalathika nishtayatuvunakalamu.
Nan uttiyaimbadu, paagalin thirkadarisiyale kondruvotan.
He killed four hundred and fifty prophets of Bane.
Naaligundraabai bhaiilapravakthalindchampiyunadu.
Panjathin naatkille avaniparamarikke kathar avanay kaahangalukka katleedtha.
In the days of famine, the Lord commanded the ravens to feed him.
Karavudhanamulla pochinchidakadevadu kaakalamulla kaagnapichinu.
Sarabathila vidavikidevam katleedtha.
God commanded the widows at first.
Sarapathividavral kaagnapichinu.
Arpuddam nandhadu.
Miracle took place.
Adbutamacharigenu.
Idhella devanukumunbaga avan nintra kaalamgai.
These were times when he stood before the Lord.
Eevanidhey devanisannidhalanilichinadu.
Avan oru pradistola manishan.
He was a consecrated person.
Pradistakaliginavikti.
Avan odayila guddavanakupradistirundadu.
Even in his dress, he was consecrated.
Vashtramillagada pradistavunadu.
Enadala avan katharukumunbaga nintra kaalamgal pradistain kaalamgal.
Because the days in which he stood before the Lord were days of his consecration.
Devanithalilichinadu dinamulla pradistadinam.
Avan pairayavada, avanudaya odayda, avanudaya pradistada, avanudaya adayalam.
More than his name, his ring and his dress was a sign.
Renjarakal onniyattila namparkumbaduva.
When we see in First Kings, chapter one, verse eight.
Rendavajjala madhutiradyam enidhitavakam.
Avan yarapadiinara raja kakkara.
The king was asking who he was.
Atharavarnidha rajvaadukchunadu.
Avan pairthiriyadu naandhsavakarakcholdra.
The soldiers said that they did not know his name.
Pairthalidani sevakarachipayinadu.
Avan raja kakkara, avan ennadrasportanam.
Then the king asked what dress he was putting on.
Yevastramavaskanadu rajvaadigina.
Avan dressapathichunavadu neavacholdra, avan eliyada, enna adhada avanudaya adayalam.
When it was told about his dress, the king said it was Elijah because that was a sign.
Vashtramayachappinappudu, rilyanachappinandhikadha.
Arvayavamal ongeladu pradistada ongeladu adayalam.
Beloved, your consecration is your sign.
Priyamayavalladu pradistayamigut.
Ongeladu pradistada ongeladu bellan.
Your consecration is your string.
Me pradistayamigut.
Yeljada potthavaraa bathingenna avan Simpson.
If you see a person with seven locks of hair, he is Samson.
Yedu chedlagalavikthinachinadu samsonu.
Singethakilichana avan Simpson.
If he is rent, the lion, he is Samson.
Simmuavamachilichinadu samsonu.
Koliyathaidichana avan oru thaavidu.
If he has beaten Golayath, he is David.
Golayathinachampinadu thaavidu.
Ipri overukor adayala ruke.
Like this, every person has a sign.
Eelaakupradivakarkakusuchinavunadu.
Ipripataya oru devigamana sakthiulla devanakumunbaga nintra manidhanthan, indha eliyayindra oru thirkadarisi.
Now this Elijah was a prophet, was a divine person, he was a prophet who stood before the Lord.
Eelaakadavyikamana shaktikalakadevanithalilichinaviktiyayidu.
Ivakathar ennathcholdra.
Now what is the Lord saying?
Devadame chapputsunadu.
Oru kalahtila enakkumunbaga nintra.
Once upon a time, you stood before me.
Vaakalamna edhritinachinadu.
Desatthayaasaitaaya.
You shook the land.
Desamunakampinachesinu.
Rajakalakalangaditaaya.
You troubled the kings.
Rajjulakalavapachinu.
Annyevallemegalay muriyaditaaya.
You defeated the strange powers.
Annyashaktilai parchinu.
Vanaaththi adaitaaya, tirandhaaya, akkiniyirakinaaya.
You shut the heavens, you opened the heavens, you brought down fire.
Akasamunamushivestinu.
Adhaya anubomathikukavamudiyahaneemarubodi enakkumunbaga vandhunnil.
Again, you come and stand before me that you may come back to that experience.
Adhaya anubomulakachinadu naedhutinilomu.
Indha varisatin kadaisiki vandurukkare, naamayum devanidewarthai alakiradu.
We have come to the fact, end of this year, the word of the Lord is calling us also.
Samuchirathamakachinadu manaladhey devadupilichachinadu.
Marubodiye enakkumunbaga vandhunnilingalindhu kathar choldukara.
The Lord is telling, come and stand before me once again.
Marla naedhutinilomu devaduchapputsunadu.
Marubodiye thirappil nilingalindhu kathar choldukara.
The Lord is telling again, you stand at the breach.
Marla sandhalanilomu devaduchapputsunadu.
Marubodiyavanaaththi adakkethirakkavunakadigaran kodukumudiyahae, neen enakkumunbaga vandhunnil.
The time may give you authority once again to open the heavens and shut the heavens, come and stand before me.
Marla akasamunathirichidakumuiitakana edhutinilomu.
Aana enna nandhadu?
But what happened?
Chariginadu yemi.
Ella nalalam boyidrinachi.
Everything was going on well.
Annye bhaagundadu.
Tiriirni esabel dirdu oru saidiyavandhade.
Suddenly a news came from Jesse Bell.
Akasamutthi ezhupelni vartamana vachinu.
Naaliki nee nichayamone kondruvanchona.
Tomorrow, surely I will kill you, she said.
Rapputidinamishtayamukachampadunu.
Indha artha avanapattinabdiyathadumara vachirchi.
This word immediately made him to stumble.
Yekamata thanithaladilla chesinu.
Yam payipadunna?
Why he should fear?
Endukabayipadavallenu.
Avanathilunakakniyarakana manishan, esabale, nee setthupovayahae, apriina esabel nindruva. Chethruva.
He was a person who brought fire from heaven down, if he says Jesse Bell, you die, she will die.
Akasamunadupidigachinavikti, ezhupelnu channipomutthi.
Oru kalahtla vyadiodu poradinani.
Once upon a time, we are fighting with sickness.
Vaakalamnu vaavithaporadu.
Visasasayvanegalodu poradinani.
You were fighting with devil and witchcraft.
Apavamadichathipaditha poradu.
Manilalalodiyavallamigalodu poradinani.
You were fighting with strange powers.
Annyashaktilthaporadani.
Avasiyapattal devanodu poradiyasiiduva dangalipetthani.
If needed, you strove with God and received blessings from him.
Kaavallanidhey devantaporadiyasiyavatham pundrani.
Neekikunakuyirbayavandricha.
Now you have fear of life.
Edinamunapraanabayavachinu.
Oru maranabayavunakavandricha.
You have a fear of death.
Maranabayavachinadu.
Edada ayyiduma.
If anything will happen.
Edhanascharuguna.
Namudayotha mudinjeruma.
Will it erase me over?
Manapurukaiipovuna.
Namakke kavala padruoma.
Will we be put to shame?
In these times only you have to stand before the Lord.
It is only some of them, they will not believe in me.
But what happened?
What happened?
He began to run.
He began to run.
He asked his servant not to come with him and he put him away.
So, if you can't come with him, then you will leave him.
Hello, my beloved people of God.
My beloved people of God.
What is your state?
What is your state?
Where are the times in which you were illuminated for the Lord?
Where are the times when you were rejoicing?
What was rejoicing that you had in the beginning?
When you were content.
Your eyes were not ready for the time. There were times in which you were ready to pluck even your eyes and give water, where are those times?
You can't see, you can't see.
Now, what is your state? How should I survive?
How should I live?
Somehow I should live.
How should I live?
The thought of dying for Jesus has left you, you have decided to live in this world.
When time changes.
No need.
No need.
It will be good if I die.
You will die.
This kind of confession came to Elijah.
You will die.
I will die. I don't have a bigger brother. I'm so miserable. I will die. You will die. He came to confess to say enough, Lord, take away my life, I am not greater than my fathers, you take away my life.
If you don't have a prayer, you will not be able to do it.
How many of you have lost the nature of standing before the Lord this year?
You will die.
Within how many of you, the fear of death is eternal?
You will die.
How many of you have lost the nature of standing before the Lord this year? The paths that you went through this year, how many of you thought enough, Lord, take away my life, if I had known this before, I would have not come enough, take away my life.
If you don't have a prayer, you will not be able to do it. You will die.
First Kings chapter nineteen verse four, he says, enough, Lord.
You will die.
Take away my life.
I am not good.
You will die. Today, what is your state?
What is the state of a church?
What is the state of your family?
What is the state of your ministry?
What is the state of your ministry?
You will die.
Now, what is the confession that is coming out of you?
You will die.
Enough, Lord.
You will die.
It will be good if I die.
You will die.
Take me away.
You will die.
I cannot get all these kind of names.
You will die.
I cannot be put to shame like this.
You will die.
I cannot bear reproach like this.
You will die.
Don't want.
You will die.
Take me away.
You will die.
I am not able to bear.
You will die.
How many of you are coming here with this confession?
You will die.
In the midst of these kind of conflicts, he came to a place called Horip.
You will die.
Verse eight says that.
What is it, Horip?
What is it, Horip?
Horip is a mountain.
That is a mount of God.
It is a mountain.
You will die. Even though you may progress, in the paths that you are going through, according to the church, you are forming yourself.
You will die.
You think about your state.
What is your state?
Horip.
Horip.
Horip is a church of God.
It is a church of God.
Horip is a mountain of God.
You will die.
See in what state you are.
When we see Exodus chapter three verses one and two.
In the first verse, he said, Moses came to this place called Horip, the Lord appeared to him in a fiery bush and spoke to him.
You will die.
After forty years, he had the call of God, this is the place from where he got it.
You will die.
The place where the vision of God, the calling of God has been God is Horip.
You will die.
What is your calling?
You will die.
What is your election?
You will die.
Why God has called you?
You will die.
Do you remember the time when you got the calling?
You will die.
In which place did he speak to you first?
You will die.
In which day did you get the spiritual vision?
You will die.
That is Horip.
You will die.
Exodus chapter seventeen.
You will die.
When we see verses five and six.
You will die.
The place where God stood and quenched the thirst of the people was Horip.
You will die.
After coming into this church.
You will die.
The Lord spoke to you.
You will die.
You confirmed the voice of your calling.
You will die.
He gave you a vision.
You will die.
The Lord gave you revelation.
You will die.
He confirmed your call.
You will die.
There were times when God spoke to you face to face.
You will die.
If you forget all these things, you will become traitors.
You will die.
None of you have come here accidentally.
You will die.
According to the eternal purpose of God, you have been called and you have come to this place.
You will die.
After coming to this place.
You will die.
After coming to the experience of church.
You will die.
The Lord undertook the matters of your family.
You will die.
He took charge of your matters.
You will die.
He took charge of your matters of your children.
You will die.
He took the charge of your business.
You will die.
Literally, he quenched your thirst.
You will die.
Giving an anointing, he quenched your spiritual thirst.
You will die.
This is the second aspect of Horip.
You will die.
When we see Exodus chapter thirty-three verses five and six.
You will die.
Only when people came to this place called Horip, people removed their ornaments.
You will die.
After that, they did not put on their ornaments.
You will die.
After coming here.
You will die.
After coming to this place called Horip.
You will die.
This world became as a filth to you.
You will die.
You stopped beautifying yourself.
You hate decorating yourself.
You hated having the pleasures of sin for a season.
You will die.
World became as a dust to you.
You left it.
You left it.
Whether you left it or not, you yourself know about it.
You will die.
The time you remove your ornaments, it means you have come to the place Horip.
You will die. If God has called you, it means you have come to Horip.
You will die.
If the Lord meets your needs, if your thirst has been quenched and if been anointed, it means you have come to Horip.
You will die.
Your turn, me chapter four.
You will die.
When we see verse fifteen.
You will die.
Here God spoke.
You will die.
How many times the Lord spoke to you this year?
You will die.
When you heard the word of God.
When you heard the messages.
Through the prophecies.
You will die.
Through the leaders.
You will die.
Through the saints.
You will die.
Secretly.
You will die.
Openly.
You will die.
Through dreams.
You will die.
Face to face.
You will die.
Apparently.
You will die.
Do you have the experience of God speaking to you?
You will die.
Now, do you have it?
You will die.
As others are talking to you, does God speak to you?
You will die.
This is Horip.
You will die.
Experience of God speaking.
You will die.
In numbers chapter twelve, when God speaks about Moses.
You will die.
My servant Moses is not so.
You will die.
If any of you is a prophet.
You will die.
I will deal with him through a dream or a wish.
You will die.
In a secret way, I will reveal to him.
You will die.
But with my servant Moses, I will not be so.
You will die.
I spoke to him mouth to mouth, even apparently.
You will die.
This is Horip.
You will die.
Did the Lord speak to you in some way?
You will die.
Your turn, me.
Chapter five.
Verse two.
You will die.
What is mentioned here?
You will die.
God made a covenant with his people.
You will die.
This is an important aspect of a life.
You will die.
God and man.
You will die.
Man and God.
You will die.
Being made one in consecration.
You will die.
They are making a covenant between themselves.
You will die.
Today, that is important.
You will die.
What is the covenant between you and your God today?
You will die.
What is the promise the Lord gave you?
You will die.
Has the Lord made a covenant with you? Have you made a covenant with the Lord?
You will die.
There should be consecration in your hair.
You will die.
There should be covenant in your eyes.
You will die.
There should be covenant in your mouth.
You will die.
There should be covenant in your dress.
You will die.
There should be covenant in your sleeping.
You will die.
There should be covenant in your food.
You will die.
You will die. There is such a kind of life, that is Horip.
You will die.
What does the scripture say?
You will die.
Job says, I made a covenant with my eyes.
You will die.
Daniel said, I made a covenant with food.
You will die.
David said, I will not talk to you. David says that he had made a decision with this mouth that will not speak wrong words.
You will die.
In some hundred and thirty-two, what does David say?
You will die.
I have made a covenant with my eyes, what is the covenant, I will not sleep.
You will die.
I will not go into my bed.
You will die.
I will not give sleep to my eyes.
You will die.
These are experiences of consecration.
You will die.
In your dress, in your food, in your raiment, in your hair, in your eyes, in your speech, in everything, you need a consecration, that is Horip.
You will die.
When we see Deuteronomy chapter eighteen verse sixteen.
You will die.
Horip is a place where the congregation gathers.
You will die.
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 God has brought you to this fellowship with the saints of God, to worship him, to partake in the inheritance of the saints in light, this is Horip.
You will die.
You will die.
You will die.
According to Deuteronomy chapter twelve verses thirteen and fourteen, you should not worship God in any place.
You will die.
In the place which God chooses, we have to worship him.
You will die.
Then, you will die. There whatever is being taught by the Lord, if you observe it, only for that, the Lord will give an account.
You will die.
Glory be to the holy name of the Lord.
You will die.
And the Elijah was born. Elijah came to this Horip.
You will die.
Now, what happened?
You will die.
Now, the Lord is coming.
You will die.
He is coming and speaking to him.
You will die.
He came and stayed in Horip.
You will die.
Till Horip kept walking.
You will die.
After coming to Horip.
You know what happened?
You will die.
There was a cave there.
You will die.
He went inside and was there.
First Kings chapter nineteen verse eight and nine.
You will die.
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 Till he came to Horip, the Lord was thinking, he was coming in the correct road, forgetting all his griefs and sorrows and pain, and he was coming in the right way.
You will die.
He is coming to the assembly of this church.
You will die.
He is coming to proper consecration.
You will die.
The Lord is speaking to him.
You will die.
He has removed his ornaments.
You will die.
The Lord is answering all his prayers and quenching his thirst.
You will die.
He has hoped the Lord has not called him to uncleanness but to holiness.
You will die.
When all these things are happening.
You will die.
Suddenly, he is taking a diversion.
You will die.
Suddenly, he was taking a diversion, there was a cave there, he went inside.
You will die.
As soon as the Lord came to know that he went here, the Lord could not remain silent in heaven.
You will die.
Immediately, he came.
You will die.
As he came, it was as if he beat with a scorch.
Elijah, what do you have to do here?
I have come to you correctly, but why are you going to the cave? It's true that I have asked you to come to Horip, but after coming here, why did you enter to the cave? What is the work you have inside the cave you come out?
You will die.
What is the matter for you here?
You will die.
What is the work for a believer and a worker inside the cave?
You will die.
It is good you have come to the church.
You will die.
It is good you have become a member of this church.
You will die.
But not standing before me, why did you enter to the cave?
You will die.
What is the work of a servant of God and a believer inside the cave?
You will die.
Come out, come again into a life of standing before me.
You will die.
Again and again, the voice of the Lord was striving with him.
You will die.
First Kings chapter nineteen verse thirteen.
You will die. You will die.
God was so tense, again he was asking, what do is thou here?
You will die.
In unwanted places, what is the matter?
You will die.
Why do you go to places unnecessarily?
You will die.
Why do you go to places which are not pleasing to the Lord?
You will die.
Unwantedly, why do you go to another believer's house?
You will die.
Unnecessarily, why you call through a phone and speak unwanted things?
You will die.
God was so grieved, he was thinking that he had honored him, blessed him, and he had made him as a great person, a person able to shake the whole land, now he is gone inside the cave, now that's why twice he asked, what work you have here, you come out?
You will die.
There also, he was speaking.
You will die.
He had been such a great sinner, now only he has become a sinner, when God was speaking so tensely, he was speaking about his godliness.
You will die.
God was in terrible sorrow.
You will die.
And the church goes away from him, he is grieved.
You will die.
Looking at the church, he is earned by shedding his own blood, he is grieved.
You will die.
What else I have to do for you?
You will die.
Why are you going and staying inside the cave?
You will die.
What is this cave show?
You will die.
First part, first part, you will die.
You will die.
Okay, first part, you will die.
Second part, you will die.
Already first part is over, second part, you come out of the cave.
You will die.
In the church, he only is a believer.
You will die.
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 Only if a person cleanses himself, the Lord can use him, he will be a vessel and to honor, meet for the master's use and prepare unto every good work, if a person is not sanctified, the Lord cannot do anything through him.
You will die.
When we see in second Samuel.
You will die.
In chapter seventeen.
You will die.
We see verse nine.
You will die.
A place where we can hide ourselves is a cave.
You will die.
He sits now in some pit or in some other place.
You will die.
You will die.
There is no need for you to hide yourself in this life.
You will die.
When will a believer and a worker hide himself?
You will die.
You will die.
Genesis chapter three verse ten, Adam and Eve hid themselves because they trust first the commandments and covenant statutes.
You will die.
You will die.
You will die.
When you transgress the commandments and commit sin, when you give heed to the voice of the devil, to deception of the devil, automatically, you will hide yourself in a cave.
You will die.
When we begin to stumble, we begin to hide ourselves.
You will die.
When we see Genesis chapter nineteen verse thirty.
You will die.
The Lord asked Lord to run to the mountain.
You will die.
But he said that he will not go there.
You will die.
What happened?
You will die.
He went to the city next by.
You will die.
He stayed there for two days, gradually, he went to a cave.
You will die.
Now, what happened?
You will die.
Inside the cave, only a power was generation was formed.
You will die.
There was a wrong relationship.
You will die.
Everybody knows about this.
You will die.
If you are inside the cave this evening, you have to come out.
You will die.
Not only lot, lot matter.
You will die.
Even his children got there.
You will die.
It brought a great fall.
You will die.
This is not a time to hide.
You will die.
This is not the time to commit sin.
You will die.
This is not the time to be entangled in flesh.
You will die.
When we see Joshua chapter ten verses sixteen to eighteen.
You will die.
The fearful kings, the place where they hid themselves was a cave.
You will die.
Today, you are fearing sickness.
You will die.
You are fearing men.
You will die.
You are fearing devil.
You will die.
Why?
You will die.
Because you left Horip, you have this fear.
You will die.
Today, because you are going to hide yourself inside the cave.
You will die.
Kings went and hid themselves there.
You will die.
According to Revelation chapter one verse six.
You will die.
We were washed by his blood, the Lord has made us as kings.
You will die.
You were washed by the blood of Jesus, how can we go into a cave?
You will die.
How can you give him to fear of death?
You will die.
You have to say for me to live as Christ and to die as gain.
You will die.
You have to say by life or death, crying should be magnified through me.
You will die.
These are not days in which you have to remain in a cave.
You will die.
This is not the time of kings to go and hide themselves in a cave.
You will die.
Today, in which state are you?
You will die.
When we see in Judges.
You will die.
We see chapter six verse two.
You will die.
People who were forsaken.
You will die.
They sought the caves and ran there.
You will die.
The Lord gave them there.
You will die.
They were afraid.
You will die.
Because they did wickedness, the Lord gave them up to the immediate nights, they feared the immediate nights, and they made the caves as their...
You will die.
You are forsaken state is driving you to a cave.
You will die.
When we see Psalm ten verse nine.
You will die.
Lion is inside this cave.
You will die.
Now, you yourself are going and being caught in the mouth of a lion.
You will die.
You yourself is being caught in a problem.
You will die.
You yourself is going and falling in a problem.
You will die.
Daniel chapter six.
Verse twenty-four.
You will die.
Those accused Daniel were cast into the delirium.
You will die.
Today, you have the spirit of accusing others.
You will die.
You are accusing your parents.
You will die.
You are accusing your wife.
You will die.
You are accusing your husband.
You will die.
இந்தக்கு உன்னுடைய நெலவரங்கள் எல்லாரையும் நீ குட்டம்சாட்டாரம்பித்துவிட்ட.
Today your state is, you have started to blame everyone.
அந்தரும் இந்த நேரம்மோ பொச்சுனாவு?
ஓவம் வரும்பொழுது ஆண்டவரே குட்டம்சாட்டுகிற.
When you get angry, you are blaming the Lord himself.
கோப்பம் வச்சுன்னப்படி தேவு நு இந்த நேரம்மோ பொச்சுனாவு?
குட்டம்சாட்டுகிற ஆவி உனக்குள்ள நீக்கு தலைதூக்கி விட்டது.
Spirit of accusation has centered you now.
நேரம்மோ பாத்ம பைக்கி தலையேற்றியுன்னதீ?
கடைசியாக.
Finally.
சிவரிகா?
Esekiel 33:27.
எவ்வெழுக்கில் 30 வதி மிருவேட வாக்கியமு?
கேபிகளில் போனார்கள் கொள்ளை நோய் தாக்கினது.
They went inside a cave, pestilence attacked them.
கோகுல உண்டு வெளியுள்ளனு தெகுனு தாக்கியுன்னதீ?
சீராத வியாதியினால் நீ பிடிக்கபட்டுருக்கிற.
You've been caught by incurable disease.
சீருனு வியாதித்து பட்டபடியுனாவு?
இது குணமாக்கும் மர்கம்.
This is a way of healing.
இது சஸ்தபற்றுமார்க்கு?
ஆனால் இப்பொழுதா நீயோ வியாதியின் பெலவினத்திலே தாக்கபடுகிற.
But you are attacked by sickness and weakness.
இப்படைத்து வியாதி பலங்களுத் தாக்கபடுகினாவு?
அது ஒரு கேபியை நான் வீட்டுவாம்.
Come and stand before me. You will not sit down.
I have to do a ministry through you.
You will do your service to me.
When I come, I have to take you up.
I will take you up.
We will go to the church. Do you understand? I was talking to Kattar.
The Lord was speaking to you. He said to you.
He said to you.
Don't cast aside the word of the Lord. He said to you.
He said to you.
Don't go aside from the word of the Lord. He said to you.
This worship is for you. But it is a time of mercy in the sight of the Lord.
You will do your service to me.
You will do your service to me.
The Lord needs you. You will do your service to me.
You will do your service to me.
Again, the Lord has to speak through you. You will do your service to me.
You will do your service to me.
Again, he has to take you in his hands. You will do your service to me.
Abraham, what will I do to you?
Abraham, what will I do to you?
Abraham, I will take your hand.
Abraham, how will I forsake you? You will do your service to me.
In this last meeting, we will go to the church.
In this last meeting, we have to come out of there. You will do your service to me.
I was talking to Kattar.
Definitely, the Lord is speaking to us. You will do your service to me.
If you are a child of God, this voice belongs to you.
You will do your service to me.
If you are a child of God, this voice belongs to you.
It is true that you have come to God, this word belongs to you. You will do your service to me.
Elia, I am going to take you out.
Elijah hesitated to come out. You will do your service to me.
You will do your service to me. You also may have wrong relationships, habits, and wrong things because of that you are hesitating.
You will do your service to me.
He said to Kattar.
Second time, the Lord spoke to him.
He said to Kattar. Elia, what will you do here?
What doest thou here, Elijah? You will do your service to me. Come and stand before me. You will do your service to me.
You will do your service to me.
Again, come back to your first state and stand. You will do your service to me.
I have to speak through you.
You will do your service to me.
I have to speak through you.
By you and through you, I have to speak. You will do your service to me.
How many of you? You are saying that God has spoken directly to you, not only simply telling your name, he has spoken directly to you, raise your hands.
You will do your service to me. How many if you say that you believe that God has spoken directly to you, not only simply telling your name, he has spoken directly to you, raise your hands. You will do your service to me.
He said to you. He said to you. Why are you going to take me out?
You know that God has spoken to you, it is you to you, he has spoken, but then why are you hesitating? You will do your service to me.
You will do your service to me.
He was called his faithful.
He called you faithful.
He is able to hold your hand and lead you.
Go, Elia! Amen. Amen. He said to Kattar. He said to Kattar. How many of you said that?
With the voice saying "Come out", the power of God is time-giving, how many of us can say that? You will do your service to me.
How many of you said that?
How many if you can say "Bully", I am listening, hearing this word. You will do your service to me.
Are you going to take me out?
Come out. You will do your service to me.
You will do your service to me.
He is able to deliver you.
You will do your service to me.
He is able to heal you.
You will do your service to me. Amen. He said to Kattar. He said to Kattar.
Kindly request your parents.
English is good. He said to Kattar.
Please, every parent, you come out. You will do your service to me.
You will do your service to me.
In you coming out only, there is a solution for your family.
You will do your service to me. Every father and mother has to come out.
Every father and mother has to come out.
Every father and mother has to come out. He will take your hand.
Every young brother.
He will take your hand.
Holy come out, God will hold your hand.
One minute. He said to Kattar.
This is the time when every servant of God has to come out. You will do your service to me.
When you go out, the God who saved you will give you salvation.
If you come out.
Hallelujah!
He told you, "Will come, give again the hand".
How many of you said that?
How many if you believe?
Go, Elia! I will take you out. This is the last meeting.
This is the last meeting. You will do your service to me.
Who will you marry? I will marry the God. I have decided to go out. Until I die, I will not go inside the cave, I have come out, those who make decisions like that, you can tell.
You will do your service to me. Those who say that they want to come close to God, I have made a decision, that till I die, I will not go inside the cave, I have come out, those who make decisions like that, you can tell. You will do your service to me.
It is a short time. As soon as I leave, I will go to the cave.
Only a short time, Lord, it's wrong that they have gone into the cave. You will do your service to me.
I will go to the cave.
Because I went only, my children also came inside the cave. You will do your service to me.
Are you mad?
Forgive me. You will do your service to me.
You will do your service to me.
You are calling me, believing you are coming out, lead me till the end, Lord. You will do your service to me.
Hallelujah! 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 Madam! Madam! Salvation! My children! Amen. Something is hidden inside you.
You will do your service to me.
Whether you know or don't know, whether you are wrong or right, the God will tell you.
No, I am not.
Because we are in this last meeting.
Without an understanding, if there is some fault, that the Lord may forgive us, let us pray for two minutes, because come to the last portion of the year. You will do your service to me.
Don't shout. Now we will go to the next main step.
Don't bow down your head, we are going to the next step, main step. You will do your service to me.
You will do your service to me. You will do your service to me.
If there is any shortcomings, say, "Lord, forgive me". You will do your service to me.
Whether you know or don't know, what is wrong with you?
Unknowingly, Lord, if there is any fault, Lord, forgive me. You will do your service to me.
Amen. A king prayed.
He prayed.
The holy ground, even if it is covered with dust, the God of the earth is saved.
Even if the people have not attained the purest condition according to the cleansing of the people, gracious Lord, forgive the people.
He said. Even if it is covered with dust, even if it is covered with dust, he will go to the holy ground.
The king prayed, "The good Lord pardon everyone".
Where is it? Two days.
Thirty-nine.
Is it?
Thirty-nine. He said, "If they are cursed, they will be cursed, and if they are cursed, they will be saved, and if they are cursed, they will be saved". Even if it is covered with dust, the God of the earth is saved.
He said.
Now this is what we are all going to pray.
All the churches.
It's all kneel down and make this prayer.
The people who came to this worship, 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 who are not able to stand in front of the Lord, who are not allowed to stand in front of the Lord, even if there are voices, even if it is covered with dust, the God of the earth will save you in this last meeting. All of you, say a prayer. Amen. 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 Now we are going to the next word. What is that? He said to Kattar. He said to Kattar.
To the person who came out, the Lord spoke that he has to anoint two people as kings and one as a prophet. He said to Kattar.
He said to Kattar. He said.
Giving three anointings in the ministry, he asked him to go. He said to Kattar.
He said.
How many if you believe that the Lord has brought us out? You will do your service to me.
He said.
The Lord is going to give you three kinds of anointing.
He said. He said.
The Lord is giving us to overcome the world, flesh and Satan.
Amen. I will talk. He said. You will do your service to me. 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 Hallelujah! 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 I should not have said anything to you. I should not have said anything to you. I have saved my life. I have saved my life. I should not have said anything to you. I should not have said anything to you. I have saved my life. I have saved my life. I should not have said anything to you. I should not have said anything to you. I have saved my life. I have saved my life. I should not have said anything to you. I should not have said anything to you. I have saved my life. I have saved my life. Hallelujah! Hallelujah! You will do your service to me. You will do your service to me. I will say to you. 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 He saved my life! I should not have said anything to you. I should not have said anything to you. I have saved my life. I have saved my life. I should not have said anything to you. I should not have said anything to you. I have saved my life. I have saved my life. I should not have said anything to you. I should not have said anything to you. I have saved my life. I have saved my life. Amen. He said. There is nothing else like that. If you don't know your eyes, if you can't move, he will walk. He saved my life. Amen. He is a great warrior. He saved you. He saved you. He saved you. He saved you. Amen. A boy. He was forty years old. He was a boy. 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 He saved you. 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 Why are you so angry? He saved you! Amen. Now I ask you. He saved me. You will do your service to me. You will do your service to me. I should not have said anything to you. All of you. I should not have said anything to you. I have saved my life. I have saved my life. I should not have said anything to you. I should not have said anything to you. I have saved my life. I have saved my life. I should not have said anything to you. I should not have said anything to you. I have saved my life. I have saved my life.
I should not have said anything to you.
Hallelujah! 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 Amen. You are under control. You are not able to control your own. You are not able to control your own. You are not able to control your own. He will tell you about the salvation. You will not go to the cave. You will not worry. You will not suffer. You will not go to the cave. You will become a different person. Amen. Some of you will do it. But before that, you will do your salvation. 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 Hallelujah! 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 Amen. He said. He said. I live for you. I will live for you. I will live for you. We will pray for your salvation. We will live for you. How many of you? You will do your salvation. Hallelujah! We will pray for your salvation. 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 Hallelujah! Amen. You will pray for your salvation. You will pray for your salvation. You will pray for your salvation. We will pray for your salvation. Hallelujah! Now do your salvation. We will pray for your salvation. We will pray for your salvation. We will live for you. We will live for you. We will pray for your salvation. We will pray for your salvation. We will live for you. We will live for you.
We will pray for your salvation. We will pray for your salvation. We will live for you. We will live for you.
Hallelujah! Hallelujah! We will pray for your salvation. We will live for you. We will live for you. Hallelujah! Hallelujah! Hallelujah!
We will pray for your salvation. We will pray for your salvation.
Amen. Amen. Hallelujah! Hallelujah!
We will pray for your salvation. We will pray for your salvation. We will live for you. We will live for you.
Hallelujah!
We will pray for your salvation. We will pray for your salvation. We will live for you. We will live for you.
Hallelujah!
We will live for you. We will live for you. We will live for you.
Hallelujah! Hallelujah!
He said. He said. He said.
Hallelujah!
He said. 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 He said.
Hallelujah! 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 Amen. Hallelujah! 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 All of you, say a prayer. All of you, say a prayer. Say a prayer. Say a prayer. Hallelujah! 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 She is my joy. 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 Hallelujah!
She is my joy. She is my joy. She is my joy.
Hallelujah! One minute. Tavi, he came to the church. The church started singing. He died. He was calm. But when he came back, Tavi did not stop. I had this opportunity. In the twenty-first day of this year, even Jai, he did it. He did it for the sake of the holy ground. She is my joy. She is my joy. She is my joy. All of you! She is my joy. She is my joy. Hallelujah!
She is my joy. 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 She is my joy.